Seven o'clock. Okay, seven o'clock, we'll get this Central Berkshire Regional School District's school committee meeting started. We're gonna start with, uh, this is being recorded. If anybody else is recording, let us know, and let's start with pleasereligions.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Okay, roll call, please.
Dr. Craftreese?
Here.
Charlotte Crane?
Here.
Dr. Everwin?
Here.
Todd Emerson? Mr. Ferella?
Here.
Ellen Ladazuri?
Here.
Ellen Lounsb- Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Here.
John Mason?
Here.
Stephen Morantz? Elizabeth Oaks?
Here.
Rich Peters?
Here.
Robert Ronzio? Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Sarah Tucker?
Here.
Kimberly Weatherall?
I see four votes. Okay, we do have a quorum. Okay, so first up is response from the audiences. I wanna ask Tony if you'd like to speak first?
Yes, thanks, Rich, appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tony Kaygagula, I live in Dalton, Massachusetts, and I've come here as of Monday night to recognize and thank the school committee. It was two years ago, I asked for this committee's endorsement for a fair share amendment, and for those of you that may not be familiar with the fair share amendment, that was a ballot issue, which was supported by a coalition of groups led by the Massachusetts Teachers Association. The ballot initiative passed, and it is a surtax on incomes over a million dollars, a 4% surtax. This year, estimates go up to $2.5 billion in terms of collection, and some of that is coming back to us. As I said at the select board meeting, I know their Chapter 9 D funds increased 60% in about $130,000. In education, as some of you may know, the community college is free for many people. Central Berkshire has received additional money for its foundation. I understand that vocational transportation is now fully funded, and hopefully, I'm advocating, as others are with MTA, for our legislature to fully fund transportation, seeing it's the largest district in the state, it's been many years, if at all, that's been funded. So, the voice, our voices are being heard, it's coming back to us. And lastly, the governor just came out, I believe $125 million for infrastructure for our universities and colleges, that'll create 15,000 construction jobs, and so that's something also that we could attribute to the fair share amendment. So I wanna thank you, our select board, and also the Windsor Select Board, a shout-out to them. Thanks again.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Robb?
My name's Aaron Robb, Principal at Wacona, I'm also a resident of Dalton. I just wanna take a moment, as the budget conversation begins later on tonight, to let you know, share a few of my thoughts. I've had the opportunity to work with our district leadership in the lead-up to and through the formation of this budget, so I've had plenty of dialogue with them, they've obviously heard enough from me. I do not, however, typically have the opportunity to dialogue with the school committee and the general public about the needs of our schools. It's important for the public to understand that school has changed a lot in the last 15 to 20 years. I am fearful that some folks in the general community do not fully understand that. The challenges we face and the needs of our students and their families have become more complex. The work we do is more difficult than ever, it requires more resources on a daily basis to help our students work through their school day, and in some cases, even to get them to come to school. A lot is being asked of our educators. I accept the reality that we have to deliver a passable budget to the towns of Central Berkshire, and I understand the economics behind that need, however, we need to make sure we don't pass along a budget to the towns that is less than what is being proposed tonight. My message tonight is also for those who may be here or watching on Zoom, who happen to lead our towns and the taxpayers who support our schools. Everyone wants the students of Central Berkshire to excel or outperform our neighboring communities and the rest of the state, and I want that too, but you have to spend the money to make sure that that will happen. Our educators are working very hard to students with more complex needs, and I'm concerned that if we keep passing years of just passable budgets, we'll eventually be stretched too thin. So, tonight, I would just ask that everyone keep that in mind, and I would ask the taxpayers and the town leaders to remember that I happen to believe that there's two priorities for the towns, one is to keep the citizens safe, and the other is to make sure that our children have the best education possible, and I ask that the school committee help advocate for that over the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Sturgis, Mr. Sturgis?
Hi, my name is Joe Sturgis, I'm the technology director for the district, for anyone who doesn't already know that. One of my duties in my role is to come up with a hardware replacement cycle, and that would be the same if I were a Fortune 500 company, a regional school district like us, or a small business. Basically, what that means is you need to regularly replace your technology because it doesn't last forever. Basic formula for that is you take the replacement value or replacement cost of all of your technology, and you divide that by the approximate lifespan. In our case, the lifespan will vary depending on the device, so we have some stuff that might only last four or five years, like middle school Chromebooks, because middle school is sort of notorious for its top-end equipment. We have other items that might last closer to 10 years, like interactive flat panel displays like that, network switches, things that don't tend to get to wear and tear. In our case, the two numbers we're looking at are basically $1.9 million to replace everything at once, which would never happen, but if anything, if we ever had to replace everything at once, it would be that $1.9 million. If we take the lifespans of the various categories of equipment, and we average that out, we come up with about six and a half years per replacement cycle. So, if you take $1.9 million, divide that by six and a half years, your replacement cycle should average right around $300,000 per year. Historically, we've been able to fund that out of the Rural Aid Grant, we've been doing that for a number of years. Unfortunately, with my understanding of the proposed budget, the entire Rural Aid Grant would be used to offset the budget. Given that, and the fact that we aren't able to add a replacement cycle to the operating budget, the replacement cycle for devices has gone to zero, instead of what should be right around $300,000. The issue with that is you basically accumulate technical debt, so as the equipment ages, you end up with a situation where you're gonna have to catch up eventually, like any debt that has to be paid at some point, sooner or later. So, in our case, we have a little bit of a buffer there, but I pride myself on trying to be fiscally responsible, so it's not a large buffer. Being fully transparent, we would be okay for next year, we could live long. FY '27, it comes to a head. We'll run into things like, for example, I still have 10-year-old desktops running in this district, they run pretty well, but they won't receive security patches beyond FY '26. That's a non-starter in today's day and age when there are so many security threats out there, you just can't take that liability in running out of equipment. So, we run into that. We'd also run into situations where Chromebooks may not hold a charge anymore, so they're useless for classroom teachers. We might start running into issues where projectors start to fail, because although those are on the longer end of the spectrum, if we're getting closer to 10 years out of them, we're gonna have some starting to hit that age, and so you can see that you'll start getting things that directly impact instruction. Basically, we will hit two choices once we hit that situation in FY '27. The first choice is to invest in what we should've invested in in the first place, but unfortunately, at that point, you're talking double, so you're over half a million dollars. The second choice is tough choices in teaching and learning changes, like we may not be a one-to-one district anymore, or we might even have curriculum changes because we can't maintain the lab's specialized software at the high school. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of kind of the background in the recent four replacement cycles, and thank you for listening.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, Mr. Bosberg?
Did you think? John Mosberg, Principal of Nesekus, and also a resident of Washington, yes? Everybody has their concerns, and Joe well said, I'm here to speak on behalf of Nesekus. I'd like to take a moment to speak about the impacts of the proposed budget on Nesekus' middle school students and staff. I understand that as a school committee, you're in a difficult position to bring to your towns a responsible budget while maintaining a high-quality level of education for our students. I also understand the goal is to limit direct impact on students. It is with students in mind that I come to speak to you about, it's to help you understand what impact that might be. The first reduction I wish to address is the Nesekus' front office administrative position. In compensation for this loss, my administrative assistant will need to step in and be both jobs. I know this is nothing new, I believe it existed in Craneville. We're speaking for Nesekus, this would create a situation where another staff member would be required to fill in during lunches, breaks, and other times when my administrative assistant is unavailable. We currently have 14 paraprofessionals covering 98 classes for 68 students on IUPs. Of those 14 paraprofessionals, five have dedicated one-on-one paraprofessionals, leaving only nine to assist. You can see how pulling any of these people would negatively impact students in the classroom. On top of this, with chronic absenteeism being an area where we did not meet our accountability targets, our first line of intervention with students and families will be removed. The work this person does to ensure not only accurate attendance, but also have conversations with families about the importance of attendance is priceless and has proven effect. The second reduction is not filling the position of a specialist slash math interventionist due to replacing the possible retirement. This contributes both our specialist offerings and intervention classes, thereby increasing class sizes for both. Next year, we have 137 students coming in, sixth grade, our largest class in at least eight years. We lose 123 students graduating from eighth. The impact on not filling this position is as follows. Grade six specialist class sizes would increase to 27.4 students per class, grade seven to 22, grade eight to 25. The remedy of these large sizes would be utilizing core teachers to fill the specialist class, thus increasing the class sizes of core classes. Over the past two years, we have worked hard, with your support, to reduce these class sizes, with evidence of its impact on our success last year. With the elimination of this FTE at Nesekus, I regret our intervention class sizes would increase dramatically. Last year, we were reduced to a Title I position, which reduced our intervention classes by six classes, three in each grade. Reducing again, this would reduce the intervention classes by six more, making that 12 in two years. Keeping in mind that we have approximately 170 students in intervention classes getting assistance in math and ELA, this could prevent intervention for upwards of 60 students. I appreciate the work you all do, and do not envy your decisions. I'm not sure you have a good option at all. My goal is to help you make a knowledgeable decision and give you a better understanding of the budget impact on students at Nesekus.
Thank you, John. Okay, Liz. Ms. Jackson?
Hi, Ms. Jackson, I'm a math interventionist, and I'm also a CBA president, and I'm just here to not discuss fully the budget, I've been kept up with what's happening with the budget. My main concern is early intervention. Other principals have talked about intervention, and it's understood that there just isn't enough. There isn't enough for our students with needs, having reading specialists is something we all agree that we need more of, but yet, the budget doesn't provide what we need. I think that they tried to come up with a budget that would pass with the towns, and understanding that that was still short of what was fully needed to reach all of our students. So, as you're considering numbers, and as we're looking at numbers, we should be picturing students, and we should be looking at their faces, and we have to tell them, "I'm sorry, but we just can't get to you. I'm sorry, but we just can't help you right now." Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Okay, anybody else like to speak? All right, moving on to student affairs. Sophie, you're on, online?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Rich Peter, and hello, everybody. So, starting off, we're gonna go back to January, so January, the week of the 15th through the 17th, that was the week of midterms, so depending on whatever anybody's schedule is, a student would have two exams per day, like half of their day, and then the other half of the day, they could go home and study for whatever midterms they had next. January 29th, that was a freshman orientation, so upcoming eighth graders, they come with their parents, and the parents, they basically go back to school, and they get to learn everything that the freshmen, that their kids are gonna take, what kind of clubs they can do, and there were also some juniors and sophomores, juniors that are there to tell them about class expectations and different clubs that they can do, and there were also class officers there to explain different rules and what they do as well. And Wakona Regional High School's club called No Place for Hate is currently working to discuss a meeting with the eighth graders at Nesekus to discuss what their next year is gonna look like for them, and also to discuss what our club represents, and our club basically stands for to stop bias and hate within the community, and that's what we're there, we're there to discuss with them, what our year is gonna look like and what is gonna change for them. So, and the Wakona Regional High School Club called Mock Trail, they have recently ended their season after their three competitions. The Class 2026, they are putting on a fundraiser to help fundraise for their prom, so they are selling carnations and sweets tomorrow at the end of the school day. The Wakona Regional High School Appellative Players, they are hard at work with the musical called Gazza Dolls. National Launch Society, they also had an event, which is called Empty Walls, and they help raise money for food pantries, and they're raising awareness about food insecurity within the district and within the area. And then Wakona Regional High School's Next Choir and Modern Band, also known as Blood Tech Blue, are selling Valentine's Day serenades throughout the week on Monday, February 30th, and they need to put together to pick about five Valentine's Day serenades, and on Friday, Valentine's Day, they go around the school and they sing these five songs to staff or students, and they want some of their friends, or whatever, whatever, so it's a lot of fun, and I'm definitely looking forward to it, so, and that's it.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for Sophie at all? Okay, moving on, so next up is the financial reports, previously signed warrants, and then there's gifts and donations. First up is approval of a fundraiser for Wakona Regional High School Class of 2027.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. Sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the Wakona Regional High School Class of 2027 fundraiser of a dance on Friday, March 14th, to raise money for their class.
Got a motion? Can we get it seconded?
Seconded.
Any discussion on this? We do have someone remote, so we're gonna do roll call vote, please.
Dr. Craftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen Ladazuri?
Yes.
Liz Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Stephen Morantz? Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Motion carries. Next up, approval of fundraiser for Nesekus Regional Middle School True Colors.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the Nesekus Regional Middle School True Colors Club fundraiser of a semi-formal dance on Friday, May 9th, to raise money for their club.
Seconded.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on this one?
What's the True Colors Club?
So, True Colors is our LGBTQ+ support group at Nesekus Middle School.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Craftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwin?
Yes.
Todd, Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen Ladazuri?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up, approval of fundraiser for Nesekus Regional Middle School Student Council.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the Nesekus Regional Middle School Student Council fundraiser of a kindness grams from March 12th to 14th, 2025, to raise money for the Elizabeth Freeman Center.
Seconded.
Motion and a second here, any discussion or questions on this one? Seeing none, all roll call vote, please.
Dr. Craftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen Ladazuri?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Motion carries as well. Next up, authorization of scholarship donations.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the following donations totaling $7,000, as recommended by the district treasurer. $6,000 was donated to the Pat Maraca Scholarship by Michael and Barbara Baraski. $500 was donated to the Martin Phillips Scholarship from Ann Phillips, and $500 was donated to the Martin Phillips Scholarship from James Conroe.
Seconded.
Got a motion and a second, any questions on this one? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Craftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen Ladazuri?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Motion carries as well. Thank you. Next up, secretary's report, approval of the minute, regular minutes, regular meetings, minutes of the regular meetings of January 9th, 2025, and January 23rd, 2025. Can we get a motion?
Show them.
Second?
Seconded.
Got a motion and a second, any issues with the minutes? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Craftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen Ladazuri?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Motion carries. All right, next up is the superintendent's report and recommendations.
Okay, good evening. Well, the first item on my agenda this evening is, just to bring you back to a year ago, my assistant superintendent, Dr. Michael Honalt, conducted a very thorough search for the Craneville principal, and at the end of the day last year, it was concluded, so this was a very collaborative search with Craneville staff and teachers. At the end of that search, it was determined that they just didn't have the just-right match for Craneville School, and at that point, the vice principal, Rebecca Sawyer, stepped up and agreed to take on that role as interim, which opened the vice principal of teaching and learning role, and that brought Ms. Erica Phillips to us. Again, that was posted as a one-year role, so just recently, Assistant Superintendent Honalt met with the school, the search committee at Craneville School, and I am so thrilled to tell you that there was overwhelming support for this team. They have been extremely dedicated, they've been committed, they're organized, they prioritize students and support for teachers and staff, they are, they've just been a fabulous team, and they've just, both individually and collectively, they've built a lot of trust within this, within the Craneville community, so I am very pleased to announce that they have agreed to remain, stay on as our permanent team, so I just, kudos to those two.
Thank you.
Second on my agenda is, I mentioned to you that we had an MSBA school survey, we had our, we've had our meetings, we've had our school visits, they don't really give us too much input or feedback on-site. Basically, what they did tell us is that we were extremely organized, and I do wanna give a shout-out to Glenn Reinhold, he's our new building and facilities director. There were a lot of people who contributed, Beth really made sure we were super organized, Greg was on-site for all of those visits, but what they did tell us is that we were extremely organized, that we had, the information that we had available for them was exactly what they needed, they felt that we were very prepared, and that's really all I have to say right now. We will be getting report that I will share with all of you, and I, to be honest with you, I'm not quite sure how long that will take, but I don't think it'll be beyond the school year.
Cool.
My third item, I just wanted to make you aware that CBRSD has what we call ICE protocols now. We have all, all administrative teams have received training, there was an administrative, there was a training just specifically for superintendents, there was also a training for administrative teams at the school level, we also included our school adjustment counselors. We were, we were, it was, the training was conducted by the Attorney General's Office and the Office for Refugees and Immigrants, and basically what they did is they really informed us of how, what kinds of paperwork we need to be, we need to be aware of, what it looks like, what kinds of, how we respond in certain situations. I have to say, it was very thorough. It didn't leave too many questions in our minds about how we respond in potentially difficult situations, should an ICE agent approach us and come to one of our schools. The bottom line, though, is that central office really is the place where all ICE agents are directed, so if any, any were to come to the school, they would, or to any of our schools, they would be directed to us, and we have access to, another important component of that is that we have access to legal counsel. When they do go to the schools, or if they were to go to the schools, they would have, their communication would be directly with principals, so all communication, part of our protocol, is all communication goes directly to and is handled by principals, so that is either email communication or face-to-face communication, and then they are referred to central office. We do have legal counsel, as you know, Russ Dupree, and we've, I've spoken with him, and he is aware that if we have a situation, that, all situations that would involve an ICE agent, he would be, he would be, give us advice, he would be available for us in that situation. We, does anybody have any questions around that protocol for us?
Not seen any.
Okay, and the last one that I have under my.
Not as much of a question, but for anyone that did attend the school committee level training on those, the immigration and ICE protocols, what the school district has gone through for setting up their protocol is exactly what they had recommended school committees to put forward as well.
Thank you.
I was on that call too, and it's exactly what you said.
Great, thank you.
I do have a question. Does the administration know who potentially could be affected by this?
Yes.
Obviously not giving numbers or naming names or anything, but like.
Yes and no, because we don't receive, we don't ask for any kind of, and we're not supposed to, ask for any kind of, you know, documentation that would indicate whether a student is a refugee or an immigrant. So, in some cases, we may know if someone has chosen, someone's family has chosen to share, in some cases, we don't know, and I know that, I know that there are cases we probably don't know, and don't need to know, they basically advise us, you know, and we knew this, that all students in Massachusetts, you know, deserve an education and have a place with us.
Let's hope we don't have to find out.
Okay.
All right, so the last item on my agenda before we get to finance and I move into.
And other things.
And other things, right. Is recommended numbers, so one of the things that we do at this time of year, if you're new to school committee, is we look at projected numbers for class size, and then the school committee, we make a recommendation, or I make a recommendation, after talking to principals, after looking at numbers, we discuss numbers around where we can take school choice students, and that means students that are outside of the district, that are not in Central Berkshire Regional School District. So, the, I think, did you get the, so this, this document here, which is, I think we, Beth has.
Can I have?
So, while Beth is passing that out, I just wanna give you a little bit of information about grades and the recommendations, so when you're, when you have, because we have three elementary schools, it is very possible for a grade at the elementary level at one school to have. So when you're, when you have, because we have three elementary schools, it is very possible for a grade at the elementary level at one school to have high numbers and not be able to accept school choice students. However, if either of the other two schools can accept numbers, then that grade is not closed. At the middle and, and the high school, it's a little bit different, because we only have, we only have one grade, or one class of sixth graders, because they're all combined at the middle school. So for example, we could have an opening at Beckett-Washington, not necessarily have an opening at Pitts or Craneville, and that grade remains open. So as it stands right now, there are only two grade levels that I am recommending that we close. One is grade six, next year's grade six. So that would be our incoming, our fifth graders who are going into grade six. And then the other grade is grade eight. So that would be our current seventh graders that will be in eighth grade next year. So the current, so if you look, if you, if you follow sort of six going down, you'll see that's 27 students right now on average per class size. And that's for grade, that would be for grade six, and that's based on the number of fifth graders that we're projecting to be in sixth grade next year. And if you look at eighth grade, that sits at 25. That's the average class size. So those are the only two that we're recommending we close. Typically, Central Berkshire has recommended 22 students per, for class sizes, K through two, three through five, still 22. We've held to 24, grades six through eight, and then grades nine through 12. We really look at it as a whole. There's so much movement between subjects and classes. We don't really, we think of it a little bit differently. So questions, any questions you might have about, about the numbers and my recommendations?
This, this column that says, the line, "Request school choice," is that how many you have already requesting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we do have, one thing to note is, we do have, let's see if I can remember this, we have 10, we have, how many kindergarteners?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So we currently have 17 requests for kindergarten right now, which is above where we normally are at this time. And I believe we have 10 currently requested for ninth grade, which is also above, for grade nine, I'm sorry, grade nine, which is also above where we normally are this year.
Next year's grade nine?
Yes. Some of the numbers that you see for kindergarten are projected, so it's really, really difficult to know what our kindergarten numbers are going to be. Around this time of year, we do, the, the schools reach out to the towns and they ask for census data. We have some from some towns. We don't have that data from all towns.
I'm trying to raise this, sorry, but the first grade at Craneville, is that 22 school choice openings? Is that correct? And if the question was, "Why did we take 22?" That's a big class, right? Or we got a class?
So I, no, 20. So we do have a fair number of openings at Craneville in first grade. So that class right now, there's four classes right now, and the numbers in each of those classes are somewhat low.
Seventeen.
There's 17.
Yeah, I guess, I guess you, you understand my question, though, right?
I do.
So just to clarify, how, how do we post according to the state statute openings? Just per grade?
We post.
Next amount, and then we basically tell parents that there's, if they want to come in first grade, there's only an opening in this elementary school?
So we do post per grade, but what generally happens is parents ask us for a specific school. So if a grade is closed in a specific school, then what I do is I send a letter and I offer one of the, I offer placement in one of the other two schools, or one of the other schools, wherever we have an opening.
But theoretically, theoretically, in Craneville, if we didn't take any other first graders, we could do three section.
Theoretically.
Right, okay. So this is, this gets into that discussion about adding school choice kids where it has an impact and additional section, okay? And class choice, school choice is great, take that for granted. When you're filling a room that's not full, it's not great when you're adding a room. So I don't know how we would deal with that as a committee, but I just raised it as a concern, particularly given the finance of the last meeting, when the principal actually spoke about choice and about the concerns around staffing that we just heard. And I raise that for the consideration of the committee.
I was just gonna kind of question that about staffing. If we are filling in, or taking in 22 more students, a whole other class, if it might be more beneficial to be looking at using that staff slot somewhere else that's more needed. There's a seconding.
We have looked at that, absolutely, yes, we have looked at that.
Anybody else? Okay. I think we have a motion, we have a motion to read, we have to approve this.
Sure. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the openings for school choice for the 2025-26 school year.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion on this?
Can we just read through that motion that says "as presented"? Because it doesn't, and it just says we approve school choice openings, but doesn't really actually, the motion doesn't set a level. So either we have to accept what has been presented to us, or we have to actually articulate the level, the grade.
Yeah.
I don't care which way.
So we can make, you want to amend the motion? Say it again? We'll approve the motion as amended to say, what was the word, wording you wanted to use?
Yeah, I thought we'd just accept "as presented."
As presented, okay. So let's.
So the amended motion, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the openings for school choice for the 2025-26 school year as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second on that. Modified version, any questions, Paul?
Mike, one question is, just because these are all available, does that mean they will all get filled?
No. It just means these, this is what, what we have open right now. And, and actually, one of the things that, to Dr. Everwine's point, we, just historically, every year, we had, I think, and while, while I was assistant superintendent and superintendent, we would start out with three kindergartens. And then we would end up at the last minute needing a fourth kindergarten. We kept those fourth kindergarteners, and then there was always, which filtered into those fourth, those four first grades. It's always been, it's been somewhat of a question mark, do you maintain those four kindergartens? That is always a question mark because of census data. So, but I can say it's, it's a really difficult thing to predict, but.
Yeah, I mean, my kids were in elementary school, it was part of those shifting around classrooms where the teacher would retire. Okay, so now we don't have to lay off, we can go down to three classrooms. But then we saw a big bump in kids moving into the district during the summer.
Right.
And all of a sudden, you were above your classroom levels.
Right.
Had to then add a section. So we're sort of on this teetering line where it's very hard to predict.
It's hard, it's hard to figure out, is this a pattern? Or do we go down? And it, and it's, it's very, it is fairly stressful for our teachers that are waiting for those incoming kindergarteners. And they're, you know, they're seeing their numbers grow, and they're 21, 22, 23, 24. We make, we've made a last-minute decision, we've come to school committee, made those last-minute decisions. That class was low. That class had lower numbers and then went, moved on to first grade. So, which is where you see way more openings.
And one other important piece, I think, to that, as we talked about that first grade at Craneville specifically, and whether to move that position to an interventionist position that we were talking about. But the 22 number for first grade in Massachusetts puts us at the 95th percentile as far as class size. So that would be only 5% of the, if we had one student moved in and we ended up having a 20, a classroom of 23, that puts us higher than the 95th percentile for class size in first grade, based on Desi's data for class size. 17 puts us lower than the 25th percentile, so there's, there's, you know, but we did consider that and looked at that, those numbers. But that 22 number is relatively high if we had three teachers only at Craneville, just for thought.
For Beckett-Washington, are used to combining classes again for the first grade and kindergarten or first and second grade?
Yes, yeah, so the plan is this year, for next year, the upcoming year, that they'll be, right now, there's a K-1 combination. Next year, the plan is there will be two combinat, there will be two combined classes. One would be pre-K, K, and one two.
Anything else?
Yes. So the proposal is to leave an entire class available for school choice, at that 22 per kid number. And that would bring in 5,000 per student. What is the cost of running that class?
The cost of running a full class is more than the 5,000 per student.
So, so we're proposing to have a whole class of choice at, and added expense. That doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't cover, right? So like Jake said, like we're filling a class, it's a.
Well, it does, it does cover depending on how much the FTE costs, but I mean, on average, it would act, 22 would give us 110,000. We typically budget for about 80,000 for a teaching position.
Right.
Okay.
And then you're also getting those students over time, you know, you have to, if you get them at kindergarten, you have them for 12 years, it's about 85,000 dollars per student, so I mean, it, yeah.
And you could make the, we could make a decision to say, okay, we're going to go down to three. And then you have about 22 students in each of those three classes. And then you, you know, you have incoming stu, if you have incoming students over the summer registration, then you start looking at first grade classes that are potentially 23, 24. And, and that, those aren't easy decisions to make.
And just a, a point of clarification, that we're not adding the, the FTE is already there in the grade level. I, and I would think that if we were, we would never add a position for, to open up 22 spots, but because that position currently exists in, in the structure, and anything over 22 is too high for first grade. That's, that was sort of the rationale in leaving it there. But it is a high number of school choice openings.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna do this, but this is maybe a question for Greg. I'm just curious, we have 52 requests of school choice openings. Like, how many did we have last year and where did we actually yield? Because I'm curious, if we add 50 more kids, and I understand that there'll be some seniors exiting, that's like a 25% jump in our school choice number.
We have 23 exiting this year.
23?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So it's, wouldn't be, right?
The other, one of the other things to consider is, Wakona was built for 515 students. And right now, they're about, is it 450, Mr. Honalt?
447.
447. So we are future going to, I think, need some of those school choice students to, but, so it's, you know. Like you said, there's that balance. You don't want to add, do you add a teacher because of school choice? You don't know how many school choice students you could potentially get in, but we're already, we already have a lot more than we did last year.
Yeah, and if you pick up anywhere 28 kids, it'll put us at the all-time high.
We, we accepted 46 last year, and we're losing 23 this year.
All right. Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Craftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen Ladazuri?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. That's it for you, right?
That's it for me.
For now.
For now.
Okay, I, I have a lot to say, but not in, under the report of the chair. I'm gonna talk in both personnel and in the, the Wakona Regional Building ad hoc. So first up is curriculum on the reports.
Hi, everybody. Curriculum, we met on January 14th via Zoom. We had a bunch of topics to discuss surrounding the curriculum at our, at all of our schools. First up was an update on the Mississippi Regional Middle School Science Curriculum Piloting that Assistant Superintendent Honalt gave. They had a meeting that was scheduled in January, but it had to be rescheduled to January 21st due to illness. They had three curricula that were selected to review, Open Siad, Amplify, and Lab AIDS. These are listed in order of most dramatic teaching method shift to least. Two out of three of these listed curricula have been reviewed by EpiPort and are hot-listed as high quality. The third is still in review. All, all of the, at the next curriculum meeting, two curricula have been selected to field test in February, March. And then final selection is targeted to be made by April break to give ample time for professional development and material learnings for the next school year. We then discussed the ELA curriculum piloting at Wakona, again, given by Michael, Assistant Superintendent Honalt. This is in the very early stages, discussions are happening with the contact coordinator and the ELA staff about options and what high-quality curriculum options are available. Once the breadth of choices is determined and reviewed, the ask will go out to teachers, parents, and school committee members to join Curriculum Council and go from there. And I believe last week, the ask went out to everybody, so hopefully we get a member of the school committee and some families to join the Curriculum Council. We then moved on to an update on the implementation of Eureka Squared at the elementary schools from Assistant Superintendent Honalt. Implementation has been less than expected. Pacing of the units was a big issue because there are, they are in different quarters than they are with Eureka 1.0. The new math curriculum is more reading content-heavy than the prior curriculum, so kindergartners and first graders are not trying to digest word problems, which is different, but it's overall so far so good. We also then discussed the update of the implementation of the Witten Wisdom ELA curriculum at the elementary schools with Assistant Superintendent Honalt. District had a consultant from Colorado come out at the beginning of January to see how the implementation process was going, and thus, and helped guide us, the administration and teachers through it. The consultant toured three classrooms, one from each elementary school, and was highly impressed at how well our teachers were doing with the implementation. She said we were well ahead of the curve. Teacher feedback is that learning the curriculum was stressful, but liked, but they liked the materials overall. Elementary schools are now moving forward in the fidelity of, for the fidelity of teacher learning phase to active use. This means we're moving from a scripted teaching method to where the teachers have more autonomy in lesson design for their particular classrooms. The curriculum is proving to be rigorous and challenging for all students across educational tiers, which is a good thing. Some teachers are supplementing and filling perceived gaps with some non-high-quality materials, and the district is trying hard to scour and clog down on this practice. Then Superintendent Lee Davis gave a presentation on Professional Development Day given for the new dyslexia screening program. It's called Crafting Minds. It's a neuroscience-based program to show how the brain learns and stores sounds and what learning to read actually looks like in the brain. The impetus for implementing a dyslexia screener was the district has been seeing many students in the upper elementary in those schools that were struggling with word identification, foundational reading skills, and fluency. The program shows teachers how to target interventions to those students struggling with their reading skills by backwards designing lessons to help these students retain or retrain the brain for reading success. This professional development was open to interventionist staff plus all general teaching staff. Teachers learned about different learning disabilities that sit within the dyslexia spectrum, how to figure out which kids have what dyslexia issue and what educational tier they fall within. Next step is to take this program from special education and some general education to all teaching staff in the district. Our next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, February 25th, at 7:00 p.m. on Zoom, where we will be discussing winter benchmarking results and request for recommendation for the Costa Rica trip for high schoolers in April of 2026, the Green Umbrella Club. the Costa Rica trip for high schoolers in April of 2026, the Green Umbrella Club. We also have the meeting scheduled for March nineteenth on seven p.m. on Zoom, where we will be getting updates on the middle school science curriculum piloting and the high school's newer program piloting, plus what the district will be using for competency determination for graduation and rule of MCAS being removed as the statewide standard. And then April twenty-fifth at seven p.m. on Zoom, topics, the topic of discussion will be a preliminary, the preliminary presentation of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges report from Wakona Principal Erin Rock.
Any questions? Thank you, Ellen. Okay, next up is finance. Mr. Ferella.
Do you want us to start with the presentation, or do you want to?
I have a statement I prepared. So, please bear with me. I know some of this stuff is going to be repeated, and I'm sure we'll, we'll dig into the numbers in more detail, but I just wanted to make a statement. So, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to begin by acknowledging the hard work and dedication that has gone into developing this year's budget. It's always a difficult process balancing the needs of our students with the fiscal responsibilities of our towns. Over the past week, however, after sitting with the conclusion of our last finance committee meeting, I believe it warrants reconsideration of our initial recommendation. At our last meeting, and again tonight, we've heard directly from our principals and staff about the challenges that they are facing. Their message was clear, class sizes are large, interventionist support is stretched thin, and they are just barely keeping up with the resources that they have. Meanwhile, a sixteen percent increase to insurance premiums has put additional strain on already tight, on already tight budget. While five full-time positions are not being renewed, bus routes have been consolidated and tech, tech needs have been delayed. For years, this district has done an exceptional job of managing costs and keeping town assessments low. Over the past decade, the average annual assessment increase has been under two percent, while our budget has grown closer to three-point-six percent. Is that the right number? And we'll dig into those things later. But this gap has been covered through careful financial management. But the reality is that we are now facing the end of COVID-era funding and other revenue streams, while the damage from that time and the increased needs of our students persists. Originally, our town assessments were projected to increase by nearly twenty percent. I know those were not the real numbers, but we've worked diligently to bring that down to low, low single digits. However, keeping the assessments artificially low this year could force us into a painful reckoning next year, one that could require deeper cuts and into staffing and programs. To close the budget gap, we're already planning to tap into our reserves from E and D and school choice while using all of our rural aid funding, leaving none left over to roll into next year. If you recall, in years previous, we've always used these rural aid funds, as Mr. Sergeus brought up, to offset certain costs, especially with technology and other things. Tapping these reserves is a necessary step, but it comes with risks. If we deplete too much now, we leave ourselves vulnerable to unexpected costs, whether that be an emergency, special education placement that could cost up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, state funding cuts, which I would argue, given our current environment, stand a higher risk than normal, or infrastructure issues that arise like mold remediation that we, that we face. We also have to consider the long-term sustainability of our financial decisions. If our reserves are tapped, and we must aggressively cut the budget next year as costs continue to increase while revenues hold, we risk damaging another revenue source being school choice. Families would not want to choose a district that is underfunded and understaffed. It creates a feedback loop that stands to continuously punish us. We need to find the right balance between being fiscally responsible and ensuring our schools remain strong and competitive. That's why I'm proposing a modest adjustment to the previously approved tentative budget from last week. If we can lower the amount of reserves we use this year, we will be better able to face the coming years. There's no sign, from what I've seen, that it's going to get easier moving forward. Please note that even, for example, and I know this feels high, an average assessment of four percent to the towns only increases the ten-year average by less than one-tenth of a percent. I commend this committee and the Berkshire, Central Berkshire Finance Team for doing so well these past years and keeping these assessments low, but I worry changing times and circumstances are upon us. As Mr. Rob brought up, the needs of our student population have drastically changed over the past several years, and that doesn't look like that's changing anytime soon. This is not about spending for the sake of spending, it's about ensuring that we have the resources to meet the needs of our students while maintaining the health of our district. I understand no one wants to see their costs go up, and I do not take this request lightly, but as a committee, it's our job to look beyond just this year and make decisions that will, that will keep our district strong in the years to come. If we ignore these realities now, we will only be making tougher choices in the years to come. So, I suggest that we amend our previously approved tentative budget to slightly increase or use less of the reserve funding that, that we had slated to help manage these uncertainties ahead. Thanks, and let's discuss.
Thank you, Paul.
So, I have some other updates, too, just from our meetings. I guess I might as well just get those out of the way now, and then we can dig. Our finance committee had met twice before this, this meeting. The first was on January twenty-eighth. We got an update from HVAC. I don't know if there's any new news from there, but at the time, it seemed that, that all the parties involved had met several times and that they will repair and fix pretty much all the issues so that going forward, everything works at no cost to us, but we are still, as far as I'm aware, on the line for about a hundred-and-fifty thousand in remediation costs.
I will speak more to that, the, in the regional, or the Wakona School Building Project.
Great, awesome. The other piece from that committee was that we will be receiving the full one-point-six million in rural aid this year, which is an increase, I think it was of about two-hundred-thousand or so. And it looks like we're going to have to use all of that for this budget. Let's see. And then the only other thing I will add, and I had already mentioned it, is that we did hear from the, Howard Marshall and several of the other people from, at our, at our meeting, just that to again stress the need of student services, larger class sizes, the need for interventionists, and how the resources that they are currently working with are already stretched very thin, and that this was a sentiment shared by all the other staff and principals who were also present. So with that, I'll do your thing.
So... Before, while Greg is pulling the budget, the presentation up on the screen, I will just start and say that the, the main difference between the initial budget and the tentative budget, so the budget that we presented officially to the school committee last time, was the initial budget. The main difference between the initial and tentative, which we are going to present to you tonight, is that at that time, we had, I think you remember, I said there are a lot of unknowns. We didn't know that, we didn't have information regarding the governor's budget, we didn't have information about insurance rates. So tonight, we do have, and we didn't have, which includes Chapter seventy, Chapter seventy-one, those numbers are included in the tentative budget. A little bit about process and what this looks like again, so we took the initial budget, we brought it back to the finance subcommittee, we had lengthy discussions, as you heard Mr. Ferella point out, we had lengthy discussions with them. We also met with our principals, had lengthy discussions with, with them as well. There are a lot of different levels to, to these discussions. We also always make it a point to meet with the CBA and keep them informed of what that looks like. I will say that in those, in, as part of those discussions, whether it was the finance subcommittee, whether it's our principals, this community is, they, we have some, some strong advocates for our students in our community. It is, it is commendable, the, the amount of the heartfelt support that is felt in this community to make sure that our students do receive what they need, and that the people who are sort of on the ground, in the trenches right now, doing that work typically go above and beyond, if you, you know, which is why we scheduled, you know, hopefully a little walkthrough of our schools to say, if, if you wanted to see what this looks, sounds, and feels like, you would have an oppor-, an opportunity to do that. So, one of the things, just one other thing I will mention, and it's in the goals, but the goals have not really changed. The goals for us are to have, continue to have strong classroom instruction. That looks a little bit different every year. We've implemented recently a new math curriculum, K through eight. We've implemented a new ELA curriculum, K through eight. We have exceptionally strong classroom teachers. They, they also have gone above and beyond with that, to, to embrace that curriculum and, and to make sure that our students are, that they're taking advantage of everything it has to offer. And, but, we do know that just the general classroom instruction, which we talk about as being tier one, isn't enough. We still have students that need a little extra. That's what we call our tier one, that's where you hear interventionist, and we also know that, that we have students that need specialized instruction, that would be our tier three. So, that's just sort of an overview. In addition to that, we also know, and you've heard this as well tonight, that we need to be fiscally responsible to our towns, and we need to work with them around their needs, and, and these aren't easy to balance. They're just, they're, they're, they're not easy, and they're not easy conversations to have, and, you know, the group over there that you see, they're amazing individuals, and, and they were, they were willing to, to sort of dialogue with us about any, any place where they felt like they could make it work so that we were being fiscally responsible to our towns. So I, I don't have to say too much more about that. And then Greg?
So where we're sitting right now, this is our gross tentative budget. This is the use of all funds, so if it's revolving, if it's grants, we're sitting at thirty-six million, six-hundred-and-forty-three, zero-zero-one, which is a two-point-seven-percent increase for expenses year-over-year, just under a million dollars. This slide shows the increases and decreases in our expenditures, everything outside of salaries, which we'll look at on the next slide. This is year-over-year increases, so if, even if we moved it to another revolving account or grant, it's showing the actual increase here. So, Berkshire County Retirement, that is the retirement system for our custodians and assistants. Anybody that's not part of MTRS, we saw an increase of twenty thousand for that. Other insurances, that is the property insurance for our buildings, we're seeing about a five-percent increase year-over-year, twenty thousand there. A, a large one that we're seeing this year, like we said before, is our health insurance, which we're seeing a sixteen-percent increase for active health insurance rates or premiums, twenty percent retirees saw this past January, and we're seeing a three percent for dental. That's just over about a million dollars for the premiums. Our special ed costs, the transportation line, we're going to increase that by a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. That is to meet our actual expenses in this year right now. We've been under budgeted the last couple of years, hoping that we could shift some of our routes around, we have not been able to, so this is going to be our, I think, our new normal. For our supplies and utilities accounts, our snow and removal, we are in a new contract, that's about a ten-percent increase year-over-year. For the supplies and utilities, this could be supplies in the classrooms, but the bulk of this is the utilities for the buildings. If it's the heat, electric, we're seeing about a thirty-two thousand increase for those lines. And then technology, this fourteen thousand increase pretty much is just for the new, some of the new software in the last couple of years. We do have some decreases. A lot of these were discussed at the finance subcommittee. The first one is our band principal and interest. The operating budget's seeing a decrease of that four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, but as you'll see later on, the capital, the capital budget is going up by quite a bit. Our OPEC trust, we're decreasing that by three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. If you remember, we've been funding the trust at four-hundred thousand each year. We're looking, looking to decrease that down by three-fifty, so we're only going to be depositing fifty thousand in this upcoming year. Our special ed, out-of-district tuition is down just over two-hundred thousand. That is due to a couple of students that are aging out, so. Our charter school assessment, that is something that is assessed by the state, we were able to decrease that line by fifty thousand, and like Paul said earlier, our people transportation, we are going down by the number of buses we're actually budgeting for. We've always budgeted for twenty-five. As we move into next year, we'll be budgeting for twenty-three.
In terms of salaries, operating increases and decreases, additions, and some of these, so many of these positions that you're seeing in this first column to the left, we currently have, we've added them in the budget, we have them as additions because we added them after approval of last year's budget. One is a school adjustment counselor of one-point-oh. That school adjustment counselor is shared between Wakona and Craneville, and what that means for Wakona and Craneville is they have one-point-five school adjustment counselor services. The Nescus Regional Middle School Bridges teacher, that's one-point-oh. I do want to point out that that, Dr. Vosberg completed a final report because thirty thousand of that position is funded by the, was funded this past year by the Taconic Foundation. Based on that report, the data he submitted to them, it was also collaborative effort with Principal Rob. The Taconic Foundation has already come forward and told us that they are going to fund that position thirty thousand again this year. So, that's a, a big thank you to them. We, there's a special education teacher that was added to Craneville School, that was to ensure that we were meeting the IEP needs of our students. Paraprofessionals, two-point-two, and that again is to make sure that we're meeting grid services or IEP needs. Other increases, the substitute line increase is just to make sure we're more consistent with this past year. In past years, we always, across the board, allow for contractual increases. Decreases, we are decreasing a title and tutor at Wakona High School. Mr. Rob, in collaboration with Dr. Henault, looked at the ELA, ELA class sizes, ELA schedule, they were able to free up one of the ELA teachers to, to offer intervention point-five during the day. So we, that was, that was a reduction. The instructional coach position will also be a decrease, that what we're, the, the principal, the assistant principal position will become an assistant principal of teaching and learning, and they will assume the, the roles and responsibilities of the instructional coach. The administrative assistant, you heard Dr. Vosberg address at Nescus Middle School, and three classroom teachers, FTEs, which are non-renewals because of retirement. That leaves us with an increase of one-million-two-hundred-and-seventy-one, decreases of four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand, which is seven-hundred, a three-point-ninety-eight-percent increase of seven-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand. Reallocations, so, sort of, to piggyback on what I just said, the, there is, we were able to, again, this is sort of, I want to credit Principal Rob and Dr. Henault, they were able to look at student services at the high school, they were able to pull one special education teacher, reallocate that teacher, that is, is not an addition to a student support coordinator at Wakona High School. This will also help offset the fact that the assistant principal position will not typically handle discipline or behavioral issues. So this, plus having a student support center is really a better way for us to go about supporting students that are having behavioral difficulties and preventing repeated offenses. A science teacher, we currently have a science teacher that is shared between Wakona High School and the middle school. That science teacher will be full-time at the middle school next year. The classroom teacher will be reallocated to an interventionist position between, between Beckett-Washington and Kittredge, and an ELA, you heard me speak about already, the ELA teacher at Wakona, and this was a result of looking at class sizes and scheduling. So we were able to pull out a point-five ELA interventionist at Wakona High School.
So those last couple of slides kind of showed us how we look from last year's adopted budget, but we wanted to outline some of the changes that we've seen just from the initial budget last month. So, health insurances, we had to add sixty thousand to that line. We budgeted for fifteen percent, hoping that was enough for the initial, but it came in at sixteen. But then we do have some decreases, like we talked about people transportation, we've budgeted for two less buses, buses. We have our OPEC trust that we're decreasing by three-fifty, then also our property and equipment improvement plan line. So, the computer renewal, which we added in, in the initial budget of a hundred-and-twenty-thousand, that's now out. Our field, we were hoping to add some to our field maintenance account line, and then our, our general P account line is going down by fifteen. So, those are changes from the initial budget to where we are. are changes from the initial budget to where we are. This slide shows kind of our snapshot of the last five years for our FTEs across the district. Going into, or for the tentative budget, we have two-hundred-and-seventy-six for a point-two-six. That's down point-three from last year. So with our operating budget, we are able to offset it through grant funds and revolving funds. This slide shows what we used last year and what we use this year. You'll see some have gone away. So Student Opportunity Act and ESER III grants, we are, those ended in FY twenty-five. We do not have those for FY twenty-six. But we do have some new ones here. So Berkshire Taconic, we are receiving thirty thousand for the Bridges program at the middle school. And with the school committee's, or the finance subcommittee's recommendation, we have some fund, some salaries funded out of school choice of three-hundred-and-forty-eight, three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand. And we're also quite a bit in rural aid. So last year, we had seven-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand in salaries. This year, we're going to be looking at one-point-five million for FY twenty-six. Salaries is the big bulk of what we can offset with the budget. We do have two other areas. One is through Circuit Breaker, which is the special ed reimbursement from the state. So going into FY twenty-six, we do have six-hundred thousand we can use to offset our out-of-district tuition. We're also using some of this year's FY twenty-five rural aid to prepay some of that special ed tuition as well as some technology costs. So we are prepaying about three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand. So, that thirty-six million number we saw earlier, minus all these offsets, what we need the towns, our local funds, state revenue to appropriate is thirty-one million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, four-oh-seven, which is a three-point-one-five percent year-over-year. Which does match the bottom line on our revenue. So these are the funds that, like I said, need to be appropriated either through the towns, our local funds, or state aid. Some changes on this slide since our initial budget, because we do know the state aid numbers now, we are anticipating to see a two-point-two, two-eight percent increase on our Chapter Seventy. So that's just over two-hundred thousand. We're looking to see a nine-point-six percent increase over our, for our Chapter Seventy-One, that's the transportation reimbursement line. We also saw through the state revenue that we should be seeing an increase in our charter school reimbursement. So we were able to decrease the assessment line, but we are also able to increase our reimbursement line. The last major change on this one is our E and D appropriation. It looks as though we had two-hundred-and-fifty thousand more than last year. That is not the case. So finance subcommittee decided to use all of our funds. So the way the E and D has worked in the past, all but two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of the funds were used to offset the next budget. This year, we're moving into using all the funds. So that's why you're seeing that large increase this year. With all those revenue accounts, town assessments currently are seeing a two-point-five percent year-over-year increase. Nothing has changed on this slide, but this is the approach, the last five years. So the way the operating budget works is the town's apportionment is through a five-year rolling average. So these are the last five years for our district towns, which then feed into our tentative town assessments. So you'll see those percentages match the ones in the first, second column on this slide. So like we said, our town assessments, the average is a two-point-five, but they do range for, from a negative three, three percent in Covington up to a six percent in Peru. This is mostly due to the required local contribution number, which is set by the state. I can leave this up for a few minutes. The last piece of the puzzle is our capital budget. This has not changed since the initial budget, but you are seeing a large increase. So we did add, we are hopefully going out for a permanent bond for the Wacona building project this year. So there is an increase in that line, but there is also a decrease because we do not have the Beckett-Washington project on the books in FY twenty-six. FY twenty-five, it is coming off the books. So year-over-year, we're seeing just about under three-hundred thousand increase for our capital budget for the towns. The last thing is our six-year, so this is something new we're putting up here. This is the six-year averages. The first section is for our town assessments. In the middle, the last section is the overall expense increase year-over-year, what it takes to run the district. Over the last six years, the averages for the town assessments is a two-point-oh-three, and the overall expense increase is three-point-four-eight. But if you look at the graph on the right, this just kind of shows how it's grown over the last six years. So the town assessments have grown by fourteen-point-two-five percent, while our overall expenses to run the district is twenty-four-point-three-eight. Just a little picture of what that looks like. I did try to go back further, but that is kind of like my snapshot in time of being in the district. It's harder trying to figure out someone's other, someone else's budget with their offsets and everything. So, but I think it gives us a clear enough picture of what it looks like. That is our budget. If you have questions, or if you want me to go back to any slides, please. This is brand new.
The gap, the growing gap there, clearly that's connected to the additional federal money we received, right? So the folks understand the difference between those two?
So, yeah, so that does also include some of the other federal funds, so ESER or, or the other fund, if we're using rural aid.
Okay, so it's a combination of those two.
Yes.
To allow us to tamp down our town assessments while we're growing our expenses disproportionately. People have to understand that because that's our challenge this year, right?
I have a question about the federal funds. Is there any way of us knowing what impact some cuts might?
As it looks right now, they're telling us not to worry about it.
Right, no.
When someone says not to worry about it, you worry about it more.
Because a lot of his money is coming from federal sources.
It's in many of our conversations.
Okay.
Does anybody want me to go back to any of the slides?
So I have a question. This is, this is what was approved by the, this is what was approved by the budget subcommittee to recommend to the committee, right?
Right.
That, this is what was approved at the budget meeting last week.
Right.
Okay. But it's not, so, for the, everybody else here, that's a recommendation from the finance committee. It's not approval of the budget. We here get to approve this if we want to. If we don't like the bonus numbers, we can vote it down and they can adjust the numbers. Is that a true statement?
So a budget should be approved tonight, per our review.
We have to approve a budget.
But what, what the numbers are, this committee can decide.
Okay.
Can we go back to the FTE side? So we see the.
This one?
The ones that we dropped, the specific positions we're losing. So, of those, I understand that the three classroom teachers are all retirements, correct?
Correct.
Can you explain just the other three there, why they're going or where they're going?
Those are all retirements.
Okay.
Those are retirements.
Well, so the Title I tutor, we were able to.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, the, the others, like the decreases, the Title I tutor, those. Okay. So the Title I tutor at Wacona High School really handled ELA support and ELA intervention. So the rationale for restructuring that support was the principal and Dr. Hennault looking at class size and scheduling, able to free a classroom teacher up for point-five of their day. So we didn't need a Title I tutor there. So that was, that's that position. The instructional coach, which does play a valuable role at the high school. So the way we were able to offset the role of the instructional coach, we have a retirement of the current vice principal. The new vice principal has been posted as a vice principal of teaching and learning. So the new vice principal will take on the role of the instructional coach. And then to offset the response, to offset the role that the current vice principal plays, we would like to have a student support center. So having a student support center, we were able to really be more strategic on how we're using the special education teachers at Wacona to formulate a student support center.
And then instructional coach was also a retirement.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. And then just lastly, the administrative assistant was also a retirement?
The administrative assistant was not a retirement. So the administrative assistant at Nescus was there, we have, so of, so not including the high school, but the, I would say, all of our schools that have, so Craneville has one administrative assistant. They have about four-hundred and.
Four-hundred-and-fifty-seven.
Four-hundred-and-fifty-seven students. They have one administrative, they have one, they have one administrative assistant. The two other elementary schools have one administrative assistant. Little bit different at the high school. We have more, well, actually now Craneville's the largest school in the district, to be honest. So, you know, it was, what we were trying to do is make hard decisions with, with staff that weren't exactly, I don't want to say not student-facing, because this person is clearly student-facing, as you heard Dr. Vosberg say, plays a role in the school. We were trying to narrow that down to instructionally or socially-emotional support student-facing. So I, I, I think it was a matter of what we could hopefully still run the building with, but trying to, trying to get us to a place where we had an assessment to our towns that we thought was palatable.
Yeah. So just to follow up on that, how, so is there any assistance in the, in the Nescus?
There's one. So there's one at Nescus, there's one at Craneville, there's one at Beckett-Washington, there's one at Kittredge. Obviously, the two small schools, the population is much smaller. Craneville is actually the biggest school.
How many are at Wacona?
Four-hundred-and-forty-seven.
No, but how many assistants are at Wacona?
Three. We have the main office, administrative assistant of the principal, but we also have the whole guidance department that is administrative assistant.
I completely get, I think it's a tough situation. I'd be curious if there was a way to maybe finagle that a little bit to get Nescus a bit more assistance.
It depends, it depends on what the committee decides.
Yeah.
Around. It really depends on what the committee, how the committee, what the committee decides.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can we go back to that slide with the town assessments and the apportionments, what each town is supposed to be contributing? So, based on our last meeting with Chapter Seventy, I think it's really important that the towns, the select boards of each town and the fair finance committees really watch that presentation and our, that was recorded, because there's a lot more that goes into deciding how much each town is on the hook for than just prop two and a half. So, when they, when the finance committees and the select boards and the townspeople say, oh, you know, you're always supposed to be raising two and a half percent, yes, they are taking that into consideration, but there is property taxes and business growth and all of these other factors and a lot of complicated math that was very hard to digest in an hour and a half. But that goes into figuring out how much each town is going to be giving towards the school districts, or towards the school district. So I do implore everybody to, to watch that and try to understand what goes into those numbers. But I also want people, I've been hearing a lot of chatter since our initial budget, because people like to call that the tentative budget, which, you know, it is not, nothing is really official. And there was lots of suggestions being thrown out, and people still talking about how we didn't need to build a new high school, and people complaining about how, you know, now you've got us, you know, paying in our taxes for schools that are, that we don't have students in anymore, and, you know, even suggesting that we renegotiate the splits of the health insurance, given how much the health insurance went up. We're all under pressure. We don't want our tax, our taxes to go up any further. But we're at this point now where we might be left pocket, right pocket, what do we want to do? Okay, we're saving a few dollars on our taxes each year to do what to our students now and in the future. I don't know if I'm completely comfortable with not having any technology renewed or refurbished or replaced this year, because that just means we're going to be doubling up next year. So, I think we do need to relook at the budget and make sure that we are really squeezing every penny. But what are we, what costs are we pushing off to next year for ourselves? Are we just sort of rose-colored glasses this year, pretending it's not going to happen and sticking our head in the sand for a rude awakening next year?
Anybody else? Sharon?
I'd like to go off of that a little bit with the tech piece. Like, I mean, is there a way that we can add some of that back into the budget? I mean, I, I feel like at a certain point, it's not going to be a perfect budget regardless, but I would also rather have a little bit of, you know, safety cushion there rather than totally screw ourselves over next year.
Greg, can you show, can you pull up your spreadsheet and say if we were to add certain things back in, what that would do?
I don't think I have.
Yeah, so I can propose that if we were to move, and this is the high end, I don't know if this will be agreeable for towns or anyone, but if we were to move two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, ninety-one dollars back into our, what, school choice or E and D, I don't know which one, that would give us, we would be, our reserves would be increased, or we could use those funds to pay for technology, pay for assistance, pay for field maintenance, and still have a little cushion there, I suppose. That does push the town assessments up to, I think, a four percent average, which, I mean, I was looking at the past ten years, and in twenty-twenty-three, it was three-point-seven, so, almost four, right? But the past decade has really been like in the two percents. Now, I don't think that that's sustainable personally, going forward to keep it in that two percent range. And I kind of look at it as we either increase it some now, because I don't see how it doesn't just start getting snowballing as the years go on, unless something changes. I mean, we've heard from our administrators and teachers, we run a lean administration, and our teachers are just getting by servicing our students with the resources that they currently have. So, I don't know if that needs a motion or anything, but that's sort of my starting point there.
I mean, I would also say, from, from past, what you two have relayed to us is that we actually spend like the least amount per student compared to most other districts and the counties.
I think that, and maybe Dr. Erwin, you want to speak to this, would he give us some feedback, or me some feedback on, is that figure can be a little bit complicated because those, the state puts out those figures. If you compare it, yes, it doesn't take into account capital, capital expenditures. It doesn't take into account necessarily school choice. I have not personally pulled all those numbers out across the county. Like, and, you know, I just, I have not done that. So I don't, I'm not really sure, and I don't know if you want to speak to this, Dr. Erwin, about how, how we would compare, but I don't, you know, I'm not really sure. What I, what I do think is, you know, in thinking more about it, it's, it's really thinking about what do we actually need as well, you know?
Yeah.
Can I add one thing just before, based on Charlotte's question about technology? The technology line was removed after our first finance meeting. We were charged with coming back to finance with several models that had various levels of cuts to try to get to a certain percentage. And the tech piece was one of that. And I think if we're talking about adding any of that back, and I know Mr. Sturgis is here, and he can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the one, if we were adding back the tech piece, the one place where we're probably going to feel it the most is where we replace our laptops for our incoming freshmen. They, they do, they get laptops as ninth graders. Now, we've eliminated cell phones successfully, partly because we have Chromebooks. Um, and, um, it's just, it's kind of, it's been part of that, that process. But they get those for four years. When they return them as seniors, they're pretty much unusable. Um, the ones that are usable get recycled back down to the elementary schools for our carts. But, um, and that cost of just replacing, uh, incoming ninth grade Chromebooks is around forty thousand dollars, just roughly. If I'm wrong on that number, that's.
No, that's right, um, Patrick Holt's correct, that's our biggest pain point going into next year, because quite honestly, as it stands right now, I've got nothing for any incoming freshmen.
Let me just ask a, just a clarifying question, just so I'm clear. We don't really approve the lines, so we're clear on that. So, we can wish that they spend a hundred and twenty grand on tech, but they don't have it. We, we approve the budget, the overall number in three buckets, oh, two buckets, right, plus, yeah. So, um, I mean, we trust our administration to present the budget based on lines, but ultimately they get to make the decision on how those funds are spent. I'm just, I'd like to hear a little bit more from Paul, because we spent time in subcommittee working through the process. We had a lot of discussion today. We worked with the admin team, I thought it was very collaborative, maybe not. We're not, we were all, we're not all in full agreement, but we got to a point where we, I think we felt that was, um, for the most part sustaining what we have. The district, we actually made some compromises on that call and we returned a position or two. We didn't go all the way down the tier cuts. We're obviously leveraging way more offsets in terms of the revenue money and I know that is a risk, but I'm not a hundred percent sure as our chair, what you're suggesting today, which is if it's two sixty-three, are we suggesting that we return some of the tiers? Are we suggesting that we put up a reserve? Are we suggesting that we, um, do the tech? I mean, I'm just, I'd like to hear more from you as our chair, because I trust you've done incredible work and I really respect you.
Thanks. In reflecting on where we ended up, uh, it felt to me that, uh, at the time, my focus was really to see what it would take to get to that two point five percent. Um, but then reflecting back after we got there, it was, okay, we had some towns that were receiving, you know, I think at the time, uh, what was it? Peru was like in the eight, eight percent or something like that. And so it was really like, okay, you know, is this fair? But in further reflection, this is an average to all the towns. So, my thinking there was that we can't let really one town dictate what we should do for this budget if it means that we're going to be providing the students of our district a lower quality of, uh, education and access to these things. So, in terms of what it ultimately looks like, Jake, I'm not entirely sure. Um, I do just feel that, uh, after assessing these numbers and really looking at, uh, what money could be potentially moved back is that if we are able to increase that assessment, we do have a little more wiggle room. And then I think, um, from there, I kind of defer to, uh, the administration to determine how to best use that wiggle room for the benefit of our district.
I guess, um, you know, I generally support the two and a half, you know, I was pushing in that direction. Listen, we all live in a community, we're all experiencing different costs. But I do worry about taxing families out of our, our communities too, because of the property taxes ride, that makes it more difficult for folks to set up camp here. But, all that being said, um, I would support an increase to the assessment if we commit to returning that to our offsets so that we have a little bit more of a buffer next year, because I think we're all very concerned about next year. And we use some of our prepay money on the, um, on rural aid, um, to sort of pre-purchase stuff for next year. If we spend it all, we won't have that pre-purchase. My feeling is if we put that two sixty whatever back in, that would give us a little bit more wiggle room into the next year, which I think is going to be another real pain point for us. I think everyone knows it's coming. We, we, none of us should be surprised, right? Because we've had a lot of federal money coming in and here we are. So I would support that as a strategy.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, I think in general, yeah, I, I'm not, uh, I don't take those tax increases lightly, but I also think that if we stay, if we don't do anything right now, i- it's just going to be even harder and those taxes are going to go up even more in the future. And I, you know, I don't, I don't know, it seems like you had that number for, uh, a particular reason. Um, and I don't, you know, I'm, I don't know, uh, what numbers make sense, but, um, I would agree with you.
That number brings the average assessment to four percent. I feel anything higher than that, I don't think towns are going to.
But would it make, I guess, would it make sense, you know, are you more comfortable somewhere in between? I don't know.
I think we need wiggle room, I really do.
Yeah. Yeah.
This, and this is a tentative, or this is the, uh.
The towns still need to approve it.
Yeah.
Right, so if they don't approve it.
Yes.
And the only thing I will add, so this is the tentative, so we will come back next month with the final budget. So we will meet again as a finance to look at it before the towns actually get it to approve. It will be part of the public, whatever we, this vote on tonight will be part of the public hearing at the end of February, but there is still a final budget in March where changes could be made.
Okay, in, in that case, if, if everyone is on board, I don't know. Um, I think we, we move those or return those funds to our offsets.
What was the number again?
I believe it was two hundred and sixty-two thousand and ninety-one dollars.
That's what I thought.
So you got to change the number in the, in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to change the number in the.
Yeah, I got it.
You, you have it, so you can read that out.
So the pause on the same number.
So when we get there, so the first two are contractual, correct?
So, um, just so everybody's aware, so this will change of the four votes you have in your packet, it will change the first number and the third number, because, um, what we voted on, or what is, what we put in the offsets, if it was school choice, if it was rural aid, they were all active salaries. So it changes that first, that's why it changes the first one and the third one.
So what is that number now, if we?
So if you want to write down the number now, so the new number for motion one will be twenty-one million, three hundred and eighty-nine-eight-one. That was twenty-one, three-eight-zero, nine-eight-one. And the new number for, number three will be thirty-two million, two hundred and thirty-three, and four hundred and ninety-eight. So, three-two, two-three-three, four-nine-eight.
And the retiree stays the same?
Retiree stays the same and the capital stays the same. And the only thing I also wanted to add before we go into the motions, there are four motions on here. So if you have any conflicts, that's what they're there for. So if you have any relatives that are active, that are retirees, you can skip over those. Once we get to the third vote, everybody can vote on the third vote.
Skip over, abstain from voting on that.
But the third one, anybody, you don't have to abstain.
Right, but not skip over, abstain.
Abstain, sorry. Do you do a conflict?
I'm sorry, I don't understand that bit at all.
So if you have any conflict, so if you have like a spouse, a relative that's in the district or a retiree, you should abstain from those votes.
Okay.
Got it. Didn't hear anything.
Okay, you had a question, did you?
Yeah, um, so I'm, I'm looking and thinking about where this leaves us going forward, right? We're not funding the tech. We're going short on OPEB.
No, we're, we're.
We're, I mean, we're not, we're not putting the three fifty in, right? Am I, am I correct?
You're correct.
It doesn't make us short, it just means that we're.
Fifty K instead of four hundred K.
Instead of four hundred, right. We have no Student Opportunity Act left, no S R left, right, for the catch-ups on those. We've had a lot of money coming in from the feds for COVID and everything else and we've built positions and, and funded around that, that's gone. Um, looking at, I just ran some numbers, they, I, I think they're, they're kind of correct. We have, uh, just looking at the roof replacements coming up in the next five years, that's eight point eight million for the next five years for coming up for roof replacements. Plus the, I think you say three to five percent increase year over year for those, right? So the question is, you know, really where does that, where does that leave us going forward, right? Because we're kind of, are we coming at a cliff or something? That, that we're going to have to put major increases to the towns in the future years? And part of that, and how does that impact a new superintendent? If we're having a new superintendent coming in to a financial cliff, in a sense?
Yeah, those, those are great questions. I think that, um, if we are able to maintain our budget as best we can without major increases, assuming we continue to get rural aid at the level that we've gotten, um, we should, and, and we're still able to tap some of our reserves, but not as deeply as we are right now. That's why I want to move some funds back into them. Um, that should give us some runway. The way I see it is that, uh, we could be one wrong move away from something very painful. From what I understand, this is a reality across the state. This is not a unique problem, um, that we are facing here. But what concerns me is that if we cut too deeply into any of our reserves now, um, it will be an even worse situation down the road. I think that there's, um, unless new sources of revenue appear, just looking at contractual increases, um, it's a, it's extremely tight.
And, and that's assuming that the federal funds don't get cut. There's a, New York Times had a recent article, um, there was a link there to, uh, a data set that showed on average Massachusetts, per student gets about two thousand dollars. Plus, so it's like three million for us, plus.
Yeah, so if that gets cut, we're kind of at the mercy of the state to see if they step in, but we don't know.
Right, and there's nowhere else to trim here to make those. Or I guess we look at the, we look at that. I mean, we don't, I mean, obviously, like, I think we all want to give everybody as much as we can, right? I'm just concerned going forward for the future, like, like, do we have to catch up on OPEB? If we're not doing the four hundred this year?
As I understand it, we don't.
Okay.
Like, just because we're not putting, the fact that we're putting anything in is, is great.
Better than nothing.
Yeah. Okay, we were just in a position where we could do a large amount, which was even better, so it was.
Thank you. I agree with your position and I thank you for doing all, all that you have here, all, everybody.
All right, any, uh, guess, John?
Will you have, um, the percentage of increases per town based on the new rate?
Do you, do you want them? All right, I, I'll send them out after the meeting, once I have it cleaned up, but did you want to know what they were now?
No.
Okay. No, but I will send it out, I can read them off, because I have them right here, but.
Oh, do you?
And just so you're, so the new ones with the, it would be an average of a three point nine seven for the towns. So Beckett would be at two point zero nine. Covington would be at a negative two point six one. Dalton would be at three point six seven. Hinsdale would be at six point seven one. Peru would be at eight point two one. Washington would be at a four point zero four. And Windsor would be at a four point three nine.
Thank you. I, I do want to add too, um, and I've heard this from a few people, but I, I don't know. But taxes have gone up and towns should have more funds because of that. Just something to be aware of.
Their costs went up too.
Two point zero nine.
They don't have more money.
No. Yeah, everything goes up.
Well, the other thing I, I'll just add is the reason that Peru and Hinsdale's numbers are so high is the number of students coming into the district has grown for them, which is a real, I mean, it impacts a town severely. And school is the biggest line item in every town. And, you know, when they have students come in, it goes up more than the average, unfortunately. If they're building new houses, that'd be great, but most times they're moving into old houses, yeah.
I know this is going to hit everyone hard and I know there are a lot of towns that are already threatening to not pass the budget because they think that, you know, their, their school is the biggest line item and that's where we need to cut the most. But salaries are our biggest line item. We have contractual obligations. Everyone says our teachers and our paraprofessionals and everybody that works in the buildings deserves more. So if everyone deserves more, where's the money going to come from? And if we want to pay our general teachers more, does that mean we cut back on special education? Or, uh, are the arts or, uh, physical education? Or who say, hey, we're not going to provide heat on Tuesdays? What are we going to? What, this is, these are the talks that are going to start happening, because we're, we're, there's a, there's a crossroads coming and it's coming fast. So when the towns go to sit down and look and say, we're just going to not pass the budget because we don't like your numbers, what are we supposed to do? Tell us, where do you think the fat is that we can trim? Because it doesn't really look like there's much.
Let's get out and vote.
I did have, um, just one, go ahead, question, it's, it's not, there's not a lot of fat there, I'm sure, but, just as, as far as the, the tech and the tech, um, replacement, we have a one-to-one on the Chromebooks. I'm, I'm just, I'm curious, how do we measure the effectiveness of that? Like, how do we, for lack of a better term, how do we know that we need such a direct, um, ratio there for every student to have a Chromebook? How do we measure that?
Can I add on to that?
Yes, sure.
Just curious if there's research or studies that done that show like a, a technology cart or a tech room is just as beneficial as.
Only other headphones.
I mean.
Yeah, no, that, no, it's, no, it's good.
Something I've been thinking about.
I mean, I'm not advocating for removing that, I'm just saying, how do we measure that, right?
Yeah, I was just saying that initially we went one-to-one during COVID. We did not have one-to-one prior to COVID. Um, kindergarten students did not have Chromebooks. I don't know that first grade did necessarily either, Joe, I don't, you might be able to answer that.
It was generally shared carts.
They were shared carts, so, what did you want to say?
Just, the, the research around early elementary having access to technology is very mixed. And, um, the, the benefit of having devices for early elementary is they're learning the skills of actually using the computer so that they can engage with technology in the upper elementary and beyond where it does become more beneficial. But K, K through two is, is real, like, if we needed to cut somewhere technology one-to-one, that there are, and, and Joe and I have talked and, it, if we needed to move to, um, our benchmarking system, our current, the, the testing that we do, um, we would be able to operate in K through two without one-to-one as long as we had solid devices in the, in carts that we would have for each classroom. Um, and we, and we could, and Joe's amazing at setting up, um, his carts so that they're shareable. Um, so that is a place that we probably could, but what we're losing is students learning how to type and use interface with the Chromebook, which becomes more beneficial as they get into si- the, the science tech standards in grades three through five. But kids are pretty savvy and they, and they jump in pretty quickly. And so there is no real research that says one-to-one devices is better, um, or not.
And they're using tech, they're familiar with it because of their home usage.
And, and Joe, we actually, we talked about the usage of the computers, that dives once you get under grade three. So even though they have the devices, they're not like on the computer all the time, all day long. That doesn't happen. Right, and we're. Right, and we're hopefully another 100 years from another pandemic where, where we need the bird flu comes in.
All right. So, so we read some motions. Mr. Farrell?
So, for tentative fiscal year 2026 gross salaries and benefits adoption. Be it resolved that Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a tentative gross salary contractual salary increases for all employees and active employees insurance benefits budget for the school year 2025 to 2026 in the amount of 21,380,981. That was correct. As proposed in the tentative fiscal year 2026 maintenance and operating budget document and as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Kraft, Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Eberwine?
Abstain.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ellen Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Abstain.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
That's how many votes is that? You have to help, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, the motion carries.
Tentative fiscal year 2026 retirees benefits adoption. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts tentative retirees health insurance benefits budget for the year, for the school year 2025 to 2026 in the amount of $2,352,558 as proposed in the tentative fiscal year 2026 maintenance and operating budget document and is recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion on this one? So, any hearing now? Roll call, please.
Dr. Kraft, Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Eberwine?
Abstain.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ellen Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Abstain.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next one is tentative 2026 operating budget adoption.
Tentative fiscal year 2026 operating budget adoption. Whereas by its regional agreement, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee must prepare a tentative budget 70, 75 days prior to the first annual town meeting. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a tentative gross operating budget for the school year 2025 to 2026 in the amount of $32,233,498 as proposed in the tentative fiscal year 2026 maintenance and operating budget document as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on this one? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Kraft, Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Eberwine?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ellen Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Tentative fiscal year 2026 capital budget adoption. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a tentative capital budget for the school year 2025 to 2026 in the amount of $2,393,869 as proposed in the tentative fiscal year 2026 maintenance and operating budget document as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion on this one?
Just because of the raise, what is the plan to reach out to the town between now and the final adoption? Or is there expectation of, of do that at some point?
So, I can.
Go ahead.
So one of the, I mean, we have, obviously, we have the public hearing at the end of February. But following this, I'll send another letter offering to be, it would be Greg and I that always go to the select board meetings after tentative. I send an initial letter, and then I'll send another one.
All right, thank you. Do you want support from us, listening?
Thank you.
Any, anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Kraft, Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Eberwine?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ellen Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Motion carries. What else you got there, Paul?
Just dates and approvals and topics for our nets, oh, sorry, approval of dates and topics for our future meetings. The next meeting will be held at 6:30 PM at Neskes Middle School on March 5th. Topics for discussion are the fiscal year 2025, Q2 financial reports, the five-year capital plan, OPEB trust review, and the capital stabilization fund discussion.
And the final budget.
And the final budget.
Thank you. Okay, policy.
So we met on January 22nd. We were supposed to also meet again last night, but that may have to be canceled because Elizabeth Fong is sick, unfortunately. We began reviewing Section E, which is support services. And sort of the main or common case with those policies was that we have, you know, school procedures and plans in place, but we didn't necessarily have those backed up in, and actively reflected in up-to-date policy. We, I also asked for an update. We're about 50% through our policy review. And so if, you know, I'm ever able to schedule another meeting, I, I think, you know, we may want to start thinking about how we want to go about, you know, presenting the policy manual, et cetera. Obviously, still in the distance, but, you know, we're happily about halfway through at this point. Our next meeting, which has not been scheduled yet, will hopefully wrap up the Section E changes, and then we will hopefully begin Section F in addition to discussing some specific voting for the towns, Section N versus Section D adoption to policy there. That's it.
Okay, any questions for Sean? Thank you. Next up is personnel, and we have been meeting regularly because of our superintendent search. We've been meeting weekly and developing that, basically working through MASC's technical assistance. They're guiding us through this whole piece. You all should have seen the survey and the, and the brochure with a couple of typos. Thank you, Mr. Robb, for his discrimination. He was a past English teacher, he caught some typos. But anyways, so that's gone out, the applicant, the posting has been, it's been posted, and they're due by the end in three weeks. We have put together, through the guidance of MASC, they recommended a, a, how to build that first screening committee from the broader community, and it built that group. We, we're at about 20 folks right now with some open seats from the public as it comes in. We still have some open public seats that we could use if somebody from a select board or town officials or anybody else really that want to be on. We have like three seats left open. We do have an orientation for that group, starting, that's gonna be on the 26th of February here. I'm sorry, on the 24th. I'm mixing up the two things I got going on here. On the 24th here will be orientation, no, I got that backwards. Sorry. I got two things going on. One of, and both are happening on the 24th, on the 26th will be orientation for the search committee, where we bring them together and essentially coach them on what's going to happen and what their role is on selecting, screening the, the superintendents for a new superintendent. Their role is a screen, and they bring forth a minimum of two candidates for the full committee to approve. And the full committee will do interviews on those two, on those candidates. A minimum of two candidates have to be brought forward. If we don't have a minimum of two candidates, we have to, the committee has to vote to end the search because you, by law, you can't bring less than two folks forward. So we'd have to end the search and then decide on a new path at that point. Either open a search again, or if we have a viable candidate, one viable candidate, we would vote to appoint that person. So anyways, the, Jake put together a really nice outline of the process, and it was sent out. You all should have that. If you don't, let me know. And if you have any questions on any of that, we're happy to answer those at this point. On the search, please, where that stands? Are there any questions? Okay, next up is the negotiations. It's where the confusion come in. We, we, we're, we decided you guys all voted for this, approved this, spending, it's a thousand dollars that we spent, a thousand dollars that the union has spent. And we're attempting to do this interest-based negotiations. And we had our training session, the first training session, this week. And it was, it was really interesting, and I think it was highly beneficial. It was a great way to start. I think it was, I think it's a really nice path forward. We have to meet again, and that's on the 24th, is our second session on that. And that, in that second session, that will be, there are a little bit more training. It's mainly for the negotiation team on that second session, and the folks who are gonna be directly involved with negotiation. And that would be, and then out of that session is where we come out with a schedule and the, and the guidelines for the negotiation process. So both of those things are moving along pretty rapidly. And I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of that? Okay, so next up is safety and wellness.
So first off, apologies, I forgot to print off what happened at the meeting. So I'm just gonna be winging it from about two weeks ago, trying to remember anything that happened. And so I have my agenda here, too. So we met on January 27th via Zoom. And because we had so many new people, I really wanted to make sure that we went back over what safety and wellness had previously done. Specifically, our major topics and what we usually have reoccurring topics that occur. So specifically, health updates from the head nurse from the district, Kelly Jean Gallagher. Discussions with John Trent Baglia, who is the food services director. And then we usually have a quarterly bullying report from Leslie Blake Davis. So went over those and what we, other top, major topics that we have had previously in the last year or two. We also received our, our health update from Kelly Jean. She reported that the schools have a lot of flu A currently, as well as some RSV and really bad strep throat, which is so bad that it's turning into, yeah, there's some issues with scarlet fever because it has odd symptoms showing up that make parents think that they should, that maybe not strep throat. So they wait too long, and it develops into something worse. Going forward, we're having a meeting on, I believe it's March 10th via Zoom. And we will, we discussed previous topics, but I cannot remember which one we said we were going to do. So that's where we're at.
Watch for the agenda. Okay, thank you. So next up is the Wacona, the Wacona building project, and I just speak to that just for a minute. The, the work is going on right now to repair the HVAC systems at the, at the high school. Our owners' project manager has been, you know, managing this whole ordeal, throughout this whole ordeal. They've been helping us manage this, and they're doing a great job. And they put together a really good assessment, final assessment of what went wrong. And it was a lot more involved than what we originally thought went wrong. It wasn't just that the alarm wasn't hooked up and the wires weren't hooked up. There was actually incompatibility between the programmable logic controllers and the systems and the building management system and the HVAC units. And none of the rooftop units were hooked up appropriately. There was also some miswiring going on. So there's several things that went wrong there. And they put together a nice letter, and our intention is to, when we, when it's all fixed and it gets potentially partially recommissioned because the, it never was hooked up properly, so we need to make sure everything's working right. And I'm really pushing hard on making sure that the building management system talks to the HVAC systems and talks to our building and grounds director. That, that communication needs to be confirmed. And they might not, we might not even be able to confirm that until it's air conditioning weather. So it might take a while to get that commissioning completed. But I think we have a good case anyway to get reimbursed for some of this money. But until all the bills are in, you know, we, we have a nice form letter that we'll send probably to Bar &amp; Bar, and hopefully their insurance covers our costs to get this repaired. But it is, it is under repair right now, and I don't think it's completed yet. Hopefully by next week or the week after, the repairs will be done. So that's kind of what's going on there. If anybody has any questions? Yeah, Dave?
What, what are we doing to make sure nothing else got missed? Like, like, we know there's issues with the HVAC, the entire HVAC. There's a lot of systems in that building. How are we reviewing the entire contracting work that was done to make sure that everything is done correctly?
Yeah, it's a great question, and, you know, the commissioning agent, that's what the commissioning agent's job is, right? Is to go through the entire building and all the systems. And MSBA actually contracts the commissioning agent. Clearly, there were mistakes made on that commissioning agent. Whether there were other mistakes made, we have talked about doing a full recommission or doing recommissioning the, actually, the pieces that are done. And that is still under kind of debate.
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
Well, some.
A recommissioning, I, I had the same question. So recommissioning means you're just looking at all the systems and making sure they work properly.
Okay, like another inspection?
It's, I, I don't know. I mean, to be honest with you, it's just.
Another inspection, like if you were.
Yes.
It's like you're, you're re, like, at the end of the, they have a checklist, and they test all the systems. You're right, like an inspection, and they check them off if they're working properly, so.
It is a, I want to say it was an 86-page document. And, you know, there's just a ton of checklists, and, you know, I think what happens is they probably test one system and assume the others are like working and just check them off, right? So there were some efficiencies that didn't, some efficiencies that didn't work out so well this time. Anyways, yeah, so it's under debate whether we commission the whole building or just the pieces that are, were suspect. So we're talking with, and we have talked to MSBA a little bit about it.
This is more of a question for our, our building and grounds maintenance director, but is, are we gonna have a process or something so that, you know, these things are like periodically checked on?
So, one of the, one of the things that we also pushed on was proper training.
Yeah.
And that the building, that the building and management system is talking with it, and the people know how to run it, for sure, because we haven't been in control of the building.
Oh, and you, I, I just want to make sure I understand this. You mentioned about sending something to some of the contractors to hope their insurance covers. Are there potential additional costs that we might have to incur in addition to the remediation that we already paid?
So there are contractors that are working on the repairs that are, are, our subcontractor, that we hire, that, that does our regular maintenance on our equipment. They're working on this as well. So there's gonna be some bills coming in for that. And the, the commissioning is a bill as well that'll come in that could be another expense that, you know, has to be paid. And, you know, I'm sure, you know, it's gonna come out of our budget until we get remediation from either their insurance company or, I mean, I don't think, there's, there's enough that was not done right that.
Right.
I don't think there'll be a problem getting the insurance to cover it, you know, getting them to cover it because they have insurance, but that remains to be seen.
Okay.
It, it will take time to, to get that, those funds recovered, for sure. But I don't think it would take legal action. I think it'll be, that's, anyways, SCANSCA believes that's the case too, and they're recommending that. You have something to add? Sort of a little. Okay.
So is it possible that we will eventually be repaid of the expense?
I don't know about all, but a good portion of it. I'm, I'm hopeful that we might get it all, for sure.
One of the things that we're doing is working with our legal counsel, and getting advice from them, so that's still, as, we have just now kind of gotten a summary and a report from SCANSCA on everything, and I think that if we, where this goes, it would probably go to finance first, and potentially executive session if we needed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would just say it's not uncommon to have callbacks on any construction project.
Of course not.
Right. It's not an indication of general poor work, I just.
Mistakes happened.
The way, the way you say a lot of things were missed makes me think we should kind of review everything.
Well, when I say a lot of things were missed, a lot of things were missed on the HVAC.
On the HVAC, I know, I know, but. We should just make sure everything's, everything's up, up to snuff.
Okay. All right. Next up is Regional Ad hoc.
It's me. Regional Ad hoc. We did meet, we met twice, because we've missed it for so long. The meeting before that was July 25th, '23, so that's just how long it's been. The meeting, we met on the 16th and, January 16th and February 10th of 2025. Most of what we did, there, there was a couple of things, and the meetings were kind of the, kind of overlapping, kind of the same kind of review. One of the things that we realized is that we didn't have updated member lists and emails and who was actually going to be at the committees from the towns, although we did have quorums both times. So we did review kind of where, where the document's been, the process that, that it took to get there. Four towns have approved it, we need six, minimum of six. Some of the issues, I think we already know these, are that, you know, Hinsdale and Peru have, are concerned about the voting methods that are laid out in Section 6 of the proposed regional agreement. Covington, as, as well as the voting methods for incurring debt. Something that, that came up at their public hearing before this, went to their town meeting, one of the things that, that came up for them was about OPEB, and if they do prepay the OPEB to get out of the district, as it's kind of spelled out, if universal healthcare does come around, the question was, would they be reimbursed for the money that they already spent that wouldn't be used? I don't have an answer for them, but that was something that came up for them. We did, we did talk about the voting methods for incurring debt. This is really the biggest issue, as we know, for, for Hinsdale, Peru, and Covington. What we did is, is we made a motion to refer to the policy subcommittee, a motion that would restrict the use of 16N, which is a popular vote. This is the one that got us into so much, the hardship with the towns, which, which kind of fractured the trust and the relationship between the small towns and the school, school district. So we're, you know, looking to take that up at, at policy when, when we can get to that. So that would be a motion following what the school committee had voted on, on July 25th of 2019, to restrict the use of the popular method, which is 16, section 16, paragraph N, in the law, one of the two methods allowed for incurring debt. Following that, we will be scheduling meetings with each select board in every town, to go to them directly, update them on, on where we're at with the document, and to hear back from them directly, from those select boards, what the remaining issues are, and see if we can find some language or some path forward. There was broad agreement, nobody obviously could speak for any town meeting, the results of any town meeting, but there was, there was general consensus that by passing a policy that follows the agreement that was made to get the high school bill, general consensus that doing so would, would really go a long ways in, in starting to rebuild the relationship, rebuild the trust between the towns and the district, and ultimately get the regional agreement passed as-is, without needing to change it. If there's any changes to the regional agreement, we're probably looking at next year. If there's no changes, I'm hopeful, hope is not a strategy, but I'm hopeful we can get it done this spring. So the next thing is, is really just to meet with all the towns. That does mean that I will be at Covington, Covington Select Board overlaps with our meetings here, so I'll be there for one of those meetings instead of, instead of here. So we don't have any future meetings planned. We will get back together after a meeting with the towns, so I will go to all the towns. Members of RAC will go to the towns. Aside from Covington, it would be great if at least some members of this committee could go to the towns, your own town, for that, and, and it's also a, a good point to remind everybody that we should be meeting with the towns regularly. Like, as school committee members, we should be going to their select board meetings. Rich has done a lot of that in Hinsdale, I've done some. It's just something that, that I think we should do, is, is sort of liaisons between town and school committee and the, and the district, so. That's it for regional agreement, unless Liz or Liz wanted to add anything to that.
Jake, you have a question?
I have a question here, I just, I'm, I'm 9:15, but what the heck, right?
We're getting close to the end. Sorry, I have one too, so.
Yeah, so we would, what yours, in order for it to go to a vote this year, you're thinking not to go to policy, we'd have to get a policy approved there, sent to the full committee approved here, and then you think it would stick? And that's question one. Question two is, what exactly is the policy you anticipate it will say, so that folks around the table sort of understand?
Yeah. Thank you. So I did talk about this a couple meetings ago in December, kind of update on, on my progress there. The policy that we're talking about restricting the use of N, two methods under state law, we could use a town-by-town vote, that we've always done, or a popular vote, which is paragraph N of Section 16. School committee made an agreement, we voted, and Hinsdale voted. Hinsdale was going to threaten to sue to block the building of the new high school. Hinsdale voted to drop that if we promised not to use N again. We did the same thing the following day, that allowed the high school to get built and, and document signed without any threat of lawsuit. That's kind of been left out there. The original intent was to put that in the regional agreement. We can't put that language in the regional agreement by law, but we can put it in our own policy. By putting it in policy, that serves as a reminder for us that we did make an agreement, we gave our word, and, and it's about keeping our, our word there. The process, how that ties into the overall process, because that doesn't go into the regional agreement, it doesn't change anything that's already been done in the regional agreement, the towns that have approved it still have that approval. It buys goodwill. It signals to the towns that we honor the agreements that we made, we think they're important, and we're going to continue that. Doesn't mean we can't change it, but it, it really, really signals that, that, you know, it, it's about trust. We've made an agreement, we want to keep that agreement. Yes.
So we're going to put into our policy manual something that we can't put in the original agreement, because it goes against Mass General law?
Right.
But we're going to put it in the policy?
Yep.
So how will?
So that, because the, the law.
How do we abide by a policy that goes against Mass General law?
It doesn't go against Mass General law. We can't, we have to leave both options in our regional agreement. The law says that we may choose the other option. What the policy, theoretically what it would say is that we will not. And that is an agreement, that is something that we already voted on as, as a committee, and I know you voted against that at the time, but that was a position that was already taken by this committee, under different membership, but same committee.
Also, not putting, it was, the vote was for putting in the regional agreement. Did you bring up at the ad hoc committee, the, what you and I discussed as a better way going forward, because putting it into the policy is disingenuous? Did you talk about advocating for changing the law, and that that would be a better thing to do?
I did, I did mention that was a possibility if the towns wanted to go that way, if the committee wanted to go that way. I did mention that also as a possibility, but, you know, I think putting a policy that says that we will abide by the agreement that we made is not disingenuous. I know you and I have disagreed on this.
Yes.
Process, on this.
Yes. But the committee, and I'll, I'll fill in the blanks for people who weren't here.
Go ahead.
We voted on, the committee voted on adding that language to the regional agreement. We since learned that we couldn't add that language to the regional agreement. That was the agreement we made, on learning new things, right? So Mr. Stewart is proposing we add that language to our policy, because we can add anything we want to our policy, and my argument to that is that is disingenuous, and you're kicking a can down the road. What's going to happen is in the future, for if we ever need to go to that, we're in that situation again, because one town can be to it, and we're still in that situation. Covington is not going to vote for any capital project or, you know, change your school or whatever, so we're always going to be in that until we have, until the law changes. We may, we may put a future committee having to change the policy back to getting rid of that policy, and then go to a popular vote, which would be way worse than what it is right now. And so I advocate, and we'll, we can discuss this in policy, and we will, because Dave's going to bring it up, we can have this discussion and see whether the committee wants to go that, that path forward. I believe the best thing to do is to advocate at MASC, the conference, have them put forward a legislative change to change the law, so it's not a single-town veto, which puts districts like us in such a bad position. And I, and the law needs to change, not our policy, because we could just change the policy. So that's why I'm saying it's disingenuous. 10 years down the road, the, the committee's going to go, hey, we need to go to popular vote, oh, well, we'll change your policy, and they can vote to change the policy. So you're just kind of wink, wink, yeah, we're doing a nice thing for you here, but we're not. And I don't think it's a, I don't think it's the proper, they may, they may get mad at us, and they may not approve it this time, but unfortunately, that's, that's my opinion. And Dave doesn't agree with me, but we can have that discussion in policy next time and make a vote on it, bring it, I mean, it's not my decision, it is the committee's decision, policy first, and then here. So we can make that decision at that time.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you about the law and the issues with the law. You know, that would, that would involve all of the districts in the state, not just ours.
Yeah.
Right, so I don't know if, I don't know how all the other districts would feel about that, might not be an issue for any other district, and there's different ways of doing that.
Wouldn't it just be the regional, this, school district, not all the districts?
It would be regional, correct, thank you. And that would be Mass General law, Chapter 71, Section 14D. And, and we can, I have the minutes from the select board in Hinsdale and the school committee, and we can, we can look at all those and when we, when this gets to policy, so.
Okay.
That's, that's what I have.
All right, next up Superintendent Ad hoc.
Well, we are struggling to get a date, and we're pretty close, probably the end of March, and at that point, we're going to wrap everything up, and so the superintendent evaluation with all of the linked data will be available to everybody, and we'll present that after our March meeting.
Okay. So any old business? Any new business? Remarks for the good of the committee? I'm going to say congratulations, Ellen, on your daughter's Sashwin. She did very well. Problem, Ellen? And, okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm stacking.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Kraft, Reese.
Yes.
Charlotte Crane.
Yes.
Dr. Everwine.
Yes.
Mr. Farrelly.
Yes.
Ellen Ladizori.
Yes.
Elizabeth Lowensbury.
Yes.
John Mason.
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks.
Yeah.
Rich Peters.
Yep.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Sarah Tucker.
Yes.
Okay, motion, meeting adjourned. Not motion adjourned, meeting adjourned.